Okay, first on our agenda is a budget hearing. I'd like to call to order the 2017-2018 budget hearing. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Nemecus?
Here.
Mrs. Kryling?
Here.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Mr. Markison?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Not at this time, not for the budget. Okay, Jennifer?
All right, thank you. All right, this is our 1718 budget hearing. And some of this will seem a bit familiar because we did put the tentative budget on display in July. And so some of the information will be a little bit repeated with that. Also have added some updated information related to some of our end of the year. So that is where we will start. And I know the numbers are small, but I'll try to just talk you through them. So last year, if you look onto the left side, you'll see our revenue summary of our operating funds at the top, the revenue summary of our special purpose funds, which are debt service and capital projects are on the bottom left. We had our expenditures for those same funds on the right. We had budgeted a negative $792,000 deficit for fiscal year 1617. Now where we ended the year, now these are unaudited numbers, but we feel pretty confident in them, is a surplus of $767,000. So what I'm trying to illustrate is you can see by fund where we did better in revenue and also where we came out ahead in expenditures. Highlighting the educational fund, which is the top line on the upper left. And to the upper right, you can see we took in a little bit more revenue for the education fund, but also we spent about $1 million under budget. A million dollars on $33.5 million. So I want to talk a little bit about that variance as well. Not expecting to read any of the numbers. This is merely meant for graphical interpretation. These are our categories of expenditures according to the state on the top. So you see salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, capital equipment, tuition, and termination benefits. What this shows is the years from '09-10, each year has a line through 1617, that typically we're pretty tight on salaries. Benefits will start to vary a little bit based on what people take for selections during open enrollment, what our new hires select. Purchase services will start to provide a little bit more variance. And then as you go further to the right, the variance starts to swing a little bit. Some things work inverse to each other. For example, if we have a year in which our special education tuition suddenly spikes unexpectedly, an unknown student or two pop in, then you'll see typically you'll see our supplies and capital equipment will fall below, right? Because we'll try to pull back in other areas to cover that increase in cost. What I did on the bottom is just try to isolate the last three years. I know there's a lot of lines on the top. So just taking a look at the last three years, again, still illustrating salaries are fairly tight. We've come in slightly under budget on salaries each of the last three years. Purchase services, supplies are below. The 1415 lime green color line for supplies is when we actually made the change to how we do the bookstore. So if you recall, instead of having families buy books, we went to the rental type of program. And so we had to do something with our inventory and accounting wise. So that's the big spike in supplies in 1415. Capital equipment, tuition, and termination benefits. So for the last three years, we have been running fairly well, both in revenue and in expenditures. So the revenue piece. This is a fun one. So the top, again, just breaking our revenue down into local, state, and federal, and looking at that variance for the last several years, local again, it's pretty tight, right? We know what our property taxes are for the most part. We generally know what our fees, our cafeteria receipts, those are all local type of revenue. State, as you can see, can vary anywhere from 20 to 30 percent plus or negative, depending on the year. Rarely do we nail state right on. Because if they fall behind, then sometimes they catch up. So then we're always trying to follow the curve a little bit. On the federal revenue, most of our federal revenue is based on expenditures from the prior year that we're receiving reimbursement from. So depending on what those reimbursement or expenditures look like, will vary on our expenditures or our receipts as well. Again, isolating the last three years at the bottom, you can pretty much see we nail local revenue, state all over the board, and federal has been up this past 1516, but for 1415 and 1617, it was under budgeted. Just wanted to give you kind of a picture on this and then close at what that does to the overall fund balance for 1617. So we began with a fund balance of all funds of 9.487 million. Our actual revenue was 49 and change, actual expenditures 48, ending fund balance of $10,254,414. Again, unaudited, as our audit is currently still in progress. What percent of expenditures, that's 21.07 percent. Now, the high school does, and I quoted at the bottom, have a board policy, board policy 4.2, which says the school district seeks to maintain year-end fund balances equal to 10 percent of its annual operating expenses. So you are above your fund balance policy. All right, so let's take a look at this year. So this is fiscal year 18, straight up revenues over expenses. We are showing a deficit spend of $2.1 million. And then we'll follow that through and break that down as well. This is looking at 1617 versus 1718. And if you look at kind of the upper right-hand corner, when you look at revenues is across the top, we're projecting overall a decrease of eight tenths of a percent in revenue. So we're going to take in less money than we did previous. And the bottom right, you can see all funds were going to spend 1.95 percent, budgeted 1.95 percent more than last year. If you look at the particular funds, and I'm going to focus on the expenditure piece, the educational fund, we're projecting 4.83 percent increase over last year's budget. I'm going to drill down on that for you. Some of the funds are down, O&amp;M, debt services, IMRF, which is the municipal retirement program, that's the pension and Medicare and Social Security for non-certified staff. Capital projects are down. Transportation is up 42 percent. So I'm going to focus and talk about the educational fund and the transportation fund, since those are both our increases for this year. This is looking just to break down, I'm not going to spend a lot of time in the breakdown on the revenue for the ed fund. It's pretty steady. This you saw in July as well. Majority of our local revenue comes from property taxes. All right, but hitting the expenditures. So salaries, increase of 4.83 percent. We're going to talk about that, also a little bit about employee benefits. Supplies are up, capital outlay is up, other is down, and termination benefits are up. So we'll talk a little bit about those. All right, I want to drill into the salary piece particularly. Salaries and benefits are the biggest expense that we have, and the education fund is the biggest fund that we have. So that's why we spend a majority of our time focusing on that. Overall, we're looking at an increase in certified staff, which covers administration and teaching, an increase of 5.9 FTE. Roughly an increase of $883,000, which will include raises for existing staff and the increased FTE. This is all done by FTE. So for those of you not familiar with FTE, that's a full-time equivalent. So when you see parts, those are parts of people or parts of jobs. So you'll see, for example, I'm not going to read through them all, but like a .5 increase for a chief technology officer, so which we recently just hired. Formerly that position was covered by a consultant. So now that's an add to our salaries and benefit line. The addition of a science ID, addition of assistant director of special ed, bits and pieces in some of the other areas, wellness, student services, ed tech, academic support, expansion, start of our theater program, ELL up in special ed, and then director of Little Scouts was actually a shift from support staff to the admin side. So we included it in this piece. On the right-hand side, you'll see where we had decreases. Point two in world language, point one in applied tech, it's in art, business, English, music. Those are all pieces of FTE. If you want to generally look at it as point two is one class across both semesters, right? So someone is teaching one less class over two semesters, a point one would be one class, one semester, generally speaking. So those are reductions in those particular areas. Also on salaries, non-certified staff, we're currently down 1.09 FTE for non-certified staff. And these numbers are from where we ended last year. As you know, during the year last year, we did have an increase in our non-certified staff, and that typically will follow the students that we're serving. So if we have students that need a one-on-one aid, for example, we will add that during the year. Also had a big, rather large increase in substitutes. We increased that line by 80,000. We actually greatly exceeded that budget last year, which is outside of our normal trend analysis. So that's an area that we're going to keep an eye on this year. But we did have to add additional budgeted funds, benefits. We individually budget those based on employee selection. So if we run our open enrollment at the beginning of the year, May, right, is we coming into the beginning of the year, our plan year is actually September 1st. So we budget that based on what people are selecting or if they're making changes. What we don't know at the time is any of our TBD positions. So any of our positions that are not filled, we usually look at trends and make our best estimate of whether or not they will select family, whether or not they'll take HMO, you know, PPO type of thing. We will come back at that point, this fall, when we start preparing our year-end projections, and we will go back and look at, okay, what did they really select? How does that compare to our budgeted numbers? And those will start presenting typically to finance and ops after the new year. So we'll start to report out on those. Total increase, though, in salary and benefits for, this is just the educational fund, of 1.45 million. Quickly hitting some of the other categories in the ed fund. Supplies, it's an increase of 223,000. With 150,000 of that is attributable to food service. So really, there's matching revenue to that on the other side, but in order to sell food, you have to buy it and prepare it. So we do have increases in our food line, which is most of the increase in supplies. We have an increase in capital outlay, 87,000, that covers equipment, furniture, any computer pieces that they may need. And we also saw an increase of our special education tuition of just over 100,000. So those are some of the bigger pieces. Also wanted to talk a little bit about the transportation fund. Transportation fund, as you saw from those, one of those first slides, we did overspend in transportation. As you recall, the board did increase, approve a price increase earlier this spring, which was a mid-year increase. And also we did set rates for this fall at that same time. We're increasing purchase service, 339,000, to cover the cost, increased cost of transportation. We do have a few other things in there as well. For example, we do have, right now, we're holding a budget line to run two after-school buses, that if we're able to launch that next semester, we'll come out of that fund as well. We also have 52,000 in equipment for two transition program vans. What this is, is for the transition program downstairs, students that are 18 to 21 that we serve. Right now, we really transport them via Olson, which is our provider. We do cabs, we do various things, which isn't, one, the most flexible, but two, we probably, we also don't think it's the most cost-effective. As our program has grown, we've had an increase for a need to more efficiently provide transportation. So we'd like to purchase two vans for them, and then the teaching assistants and people in that program will be able to get the students where they need to be at the right time. Eventually, once we get those two, we actually think we can data collect and probably look to purchase more to offset the costs that we're paying on their transportation now. Some of the pieces, and I talked more in monetary, but some of the educational highlights, and I know we've talked about the grand plan before, really was a focus on the increase in student services and support. We also had the development of the theater program, which I mentioned had a staffing implication, but you can see it also has facility highlights as well, with the updated rigging, which I believe I saw one of the, we're getting really close, I saw some of the final docs on that today. Auditorium lighting is still on the docket, as well as roof life cycle replacements. The West Campus, some of the parking that we did closer to the stadium, also the tennis courts, which hopefully will be online after this week. They're putting in the fence post, I believe, currently as we speak in the next couple of days. And then we also have an original elevator over at East Campus. That's after, I don't know how many years, is scheduled to be replaced, 30-plus, I guess it's been there. So $110,000 for that. So those are some of the educational and facility highlights. There's plenty more. Tried to pull a few. So what does that mean? If you take the beginning fund balance that I presented at the beginning, so we're starting at 10.25, projected revenue of 48.7, projected expenditures of 50.8, ending with a fund balance projected at 8.1 million and change. So our percent of expenditures has gone from the 21 percent on the first slide to 16.74. Now, I'm guessing your question is going to be, all right, now what? Because is that sustainable? Is that a viable way to operate? If we're operating at a $2.1 million deficit, how, you know, if you only have so many reserves, how is that going to work? How is that going to last? We've run various scenarios and models during the past year, when we've looked at grand planned initiatives, we've looked at staffing, we've looked at enrollment, we look at where we are in certain life cycles. And we do believe it is a viable plan. It does need to be updated. So these are kind of the next steps. We have audited fiscal year 17 actuals that we should be receiving here shortly. We will have the adopted fiscal year 18 budget, hopefully at the end of the night tonight. And then we will go back and revise all of our revenue and expenditure assumptions. There's been some big changes. With the passage of Illinois funding, what does that mean? Are they going to catch up on some of their payments? We did see our general state aid payments arrive last week. We're really excited to see those. We have updated five-year capital plans, five-year tech plans, especially now with Jordan on board, and to see what his ideas are and what that might do to current plans a little bit. Enrollment changes. As noted, we are down in enrollment this year. And those of you that are familiar, we are down in 65 and 67 as well. So we do know that there is a declining enrollment coming to some extent, and what impact does that have on our five-year? And then also the pension and benefit trends. So we come in, we have, in our five-year for the last several years, have made certain assumptions regarding, is there going to be a pension shift? So those are some of the conversations we need to have. See, with the changes in funding, do we think that's still going to happen? Do we still want to keep maintaining that in our five-year? Or are we comfortable at this point taking that assumption out? We'll play with assumptions around CPI and what we think will happen to property taxes. We'll have conversations around staffing with that declining enrollment. So there's a lot of work to be done, but this is the next logical part of our cycle. We start, we have our budget, we update our five-year, we get our audited pieces, we then start the process over of our levy, because the levy will come to the board in November and December. So then you'll start setting the revenue for the following year. Then we'll start reflecting, okay, how are we doing so far at the current year? And then we're right back into budgeting. It's kind of the natural flow of school finance. But tonight, the legal requirements for tonight. So what you have in your package, you do have a state budget form. You also previously received what we call the pre-form, but that's a form that the district puts together, which cuts the numbers in a little bit different way. Legally, a school district must adopt a budget by the end of its first quarter, which is September 30th for District 115, as July 1st is the beginning of our fiscal year. Prior to that, you must place the tentative budget on public display, and it has to be on display for at least 30 days. Your budget's been on display since July. Schedule a date and time for a public hearing on the budget. Here we are. And publish in a newspaper of general circulation a notice of that public hearing. So all those have been checked off as well. There has been two changes to your form since the last time you saw it in July. They were addressed on your cover memo. Number one is we did update those with year-end balances, and we will do that every year since we actually produce the budget before we finish the year. Not able to exactly predict where we're going to end at that point. And then the second thing that we did add is we needed a fund transfer. With the deficit spend in transportation and also the increased cost in transportation, we do have in the form a transfer from operations and maintenance to transportation to keep the cash balance positive in that fund for this year. Happy to take as many questions as you would like to send.
Any questions, group? We're not voting just yet, but we could ask questions while Jen's up there.
Or you can think about them, ask them later as well.
Question. Of the 5.9 new FTEs, do you know what proportion of those are actual teachers, classroom teachers?
Well, I can go through. So chief technology officer would not be. Science ID would not be. Assistant director of special ed would not be. But the, and Rebecca, if she's here, can correct me if I'm wrong, but wellness, student services, ed tech, I think all of the others would be. Director of Little Scouts obviously would not be. And in all the decreases.
Actually reducing teachers and increasing support staff and administration.
Well, no support staff other than the bottom is, which is a move. So if you take the 5.9 and take off Little Scouts, which is just a shift, you're at 4.9. One, and you're at 2.5, which is the top three, are what we would consider administration. And the rest of the increases would be for teaching. Because academic support, ed tech, student services are all still certified teachers, in those areas.
Any other questions, guys? No? I think we have to vote during the regular meeting, Jen. Not that we don't want to vote now, but we just have to wait for the regular meeting. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn the budget hearing?
So moved?
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Aye. I will now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education meeting for September 11th, 2017. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Markison?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
Dr. Nemecus?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I had to adjust my chair. So welcome to the first meeting of the 2017-2018 school year. I've said this every year, I'm very, very envious of the beginning of the school year. You get a fresh start, clean sheet of paper, true do-over, along with new energy and new hope. The same goes for the board. We're excited about the upcoming year. We're starting to see some of the things put in place with this board over the last few years start to bear fruit. We have a great new, relatively new leader at the high school in Dr. Holland. Block scheduling, new supports, new food service, and more. Dr. Holland consistently talks to us about how to challenge and support our students, all of our students. This is the year we want to add to the support part. You're going to see us do a lot of business up here, where we talk about policy and contracts and budgets and tax levies and state funding. All of this is done so this board can provide the best staff and teachers in the state with the right amount of resources to develop passionate, courageous, and insightful young adults to make a difference in their world. So, on to business. Mike? So handoff to Dr. Holland, begin.
This is when we just keep passing it off. I want to introduce Tricia Bagat and Andrew Aronson, who are our student reps this year. They're going to kick things off for us. So welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tricia Bagat, and I am the student body president this year at the high school. I just wanted to say a little bit about myself, so you guys kind of get to know us, because we're going to be here throughout the school year. So this is my fourth year on student council, in student council. I have played a role on the exec my sophomore and junior year, so it's really exciting to be the student president this year. Another, a few other clubs that I'm involved in at school, I'm on the math team, I volunteer with Big to Little, I'm a part of NHS, and I am in a holiday choir called Madrigals. I love singing and, I don't know, I just love working with students, and I'm a peer tutor, and it's just been a really exciting year so far, even though it just started.
I'm Drew Aronson. I'm a student body vice president. I play basketball and tennis. This is also my fourth year on student council, was on the exec board junior and sophomore year as well. I'm also in Link Crew and NHS, and as Tricia said, this year's been going really well so far, and we have a lot of new things that are happening this year that we're excited about.
So at the beginning of the school year, we had senior-directed one-acts. There are about eight different one-acts, which different seniors who play a role in the theater got to direct either write their own scripts, or they chose really popular scriptures. And it was really cool for all grades to get involved with the theater. Student council, we're starting off strong with homecoming planning this weekend, many sports teams and different clubs. They decorated windows with paint uptown, and the art club actually decorated the front of the school. So that's really exciting. It's a tradition that's been going on for quite a while, and we think that it's a really great way for students and different faculty to get involved with the community.
And today was the start of Spirit Week, which was very exciting. We've been seeing lots of participation on our various days this week. And we will be selling homecoming T-shirts, which goes to our senior funds for the class gift and stuff. And we're playing Warren this weekend for football, and then the dance is on Saturday.
Really excited for the game this Friday, because as you guys know, our student section was moved next to the band. That was the class of 2017's gift. So it's been really fun being able to stand next to the band the past few home games, because students are more excited, and it's really nice to be able to participate in the cheers with them. This Saturday, I mean, this Friday, sorry, is our homecoming game, and we are doing the annual cookout in front of the Wall of Excellence at West Campus at 5:30 with a bunch of food and gear for the game.
Also on Friday is our pep rally, which Tricia and I will be hosting, which will be lots of fun to get everyone excited for the game. Also upcoming student council things, in either two or three weeks, we should be having our car wash in front of the school again, which was a great fundraiser for us last year. And this year, we won't be having it in October, so it should be even more successful than it was.
And then the last thing we wanted to talk about is the new implement of Schoology. A lot of teachers have been starting to use this as a program to connect with their students, post homework, post answers, or any worksheets, and it's been really helpful to be able to keep track of everything needed for a class. So we just wanted to say thank you, and we look forward to sharing more events throughout the entire school in the next few meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So I'm going to try not to repeat everything that you said, but the high school has been busy, very busy. Feels good to be back. Summers are quite lonely without kids, and as soon as they step in the door, you're reminded of why you're there and what your purpose is. And so it's been wonderful. We spent the summer at the high school wrapping things up from last year and planning for this year. And school's off to a great start. We had freshman orientation in August, late August, and school started on August 23rd. As many of you know, we rolled out school-wide, district-wide attendance changes, and we're grateful for everyone who's participated in our parent meetings, our students who also participated in the meetings, and we've received very valuable feedback from all stakeholder groups. And if you haven't noticed, we've been, some of the feedback has already gone into implementation. We're working on being responsive, listening, and learning through this process, and when necessary, not waiting for some things to shift as we learn from this process. So it's been very positive. We had open house last week. We opened our doors to everyone. It was great to see so many parents in attendance. And I know our staff truly appreciates getting to meet families and share what's happening across the school. I was fortunate to attend Be True to Your School this Saturday. It was a lot of fun, saw a lot of people there. It was at Exmoor Country Club, and I just want to say thank you to our APT, who hosted the event. It was a fundraiser that goes into our, that supports our class accounts. You mentioned it's homecoming week, there's a ton of spirit in the school today. There were a lot of people in pajamas, quite funny. Couldn't take anyone seriously in our meetings, but it was great. We had an art mural dedication today, right before the board meeting. Our art club last year created six panels for The Grind, that's our coffee shop. And we were able to talk through the process, students were able to share. And I know some of our alumni weren't able to be there, and they participated in creating the murals, but wanted to just say thank you to our art club for continuing to make our campus beautiful, and for all of our alumni who graduated last year who participated. You will remember today, so that was great. We kicked off Schoology. Many parents have heard about this, it's our learning management system. A learning management system provides course management, mobile learning, and supports school-wide or system-wide communication. It allows our students, teachers, and parents to... or system-wide communication. It allows our students, teachers, and parents to engage with learning materials during the school day, in the classroom, and beyond. It's been very positively received across the building. And of course, you always worry about implementing something too fast and too soon, and you think about capacity, all of those different things. It's actually nice to sort of be conservative in our approach and have more demand come our way. Everyone's asking, why isn't this already across the entire school? But this year, over 60% of our faculty members have implemented it already. At the semester, we'll have another group implement it, and by the start of next year, it will be implemented across the entire school. So, if your student doesn't have it yet in all of their classes, they will, and it's been very positively received. So, thank you for that. The last thing, well, actually, I want to mention that we do have parent meetings coming up. So, if you want to learn more about Schoology, what it is, feel free to come to our parent meetings, and also, if you want to be trained on how to use it, both areas will be covered in our parent meetings. That information is on our website. We have a meeting coming up, September 20th, 20th to 27th. We have daytime meetings as well as evening meetings, if you're interested. The last thing I want to mention, I want to encourage everyone to get involved this year. Our students, I know it's the beginning of the school year, but we want kids to get connected right away, and I also want to encourage our parents to get involved. It's always great to engage with parents on our committees and to hear their perspectives, to show up to our events. We have, our kids are involved in so many different things across the building, clubs, activities, presentations, performances, you name it, and it's always good to make sure that wherever possible, we're able to pack the place in support of them. So, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, this is probably not the most prudent idea if you're an attorney, but I'll do it anyway, because I'm not an attorney, so I have a question I don't know the answer to, and I'd like to pose this to Tricia and Will about school-- Drew, like I said, Drew. How'd I get Will? I don't know how I got that. Drew, I know your name. Yeah, so, how has Schoology affected? How is it different from what you had last year? And it doesn't have to be a good answer. It can be, hey, this isn't really working the way we'd hoped to, but have you seen a change in your ability to monitor your coursework yet?
Yeah, so last year, they actually had a pilot, where they gave different groups of teachers different learning management systems. So, I had a teacher using Schoology last year, a teacher using Google Classroom last year, and a teacher using like, I think it was called Haiku. And then, they sent out surveys to us in like, May, telling us, asking the students which one they thought was the best and most effective for their learning. And I personally responded to Schoology, so I'm glad that they went to it, and it like, coordinates with your schedule very well, so all your courses are in one place, and you can see like, a big calendar of all your things. And then, your teachers have different methods of sending things to you. They can either just have like, a big list of like, what's going on in the unit, make their own calendar, and then, for more urgent things, they can like, actually send you an alert that'll get you a different notification. So, I think it's definitely very streamlined and a good way to have everything in the same place instead of teachers using a bunch of different systems.
How does that compare with like, year one of being at the high school? Like, what used to happen when teachers had a variety of different systems?
Yeah, so unlike Drew, I didn't have any of these programs last year, Schoology or any of the other ones he mentioned, and we used Google Classroom, and it was more of like, a traditional classroom where you just wrote down your homework and/or emailed if there was anything that needed to be communicated. But Schoology is really helpful, because like Drew said, it posts everything that you need to know, and it's, you're able to email your teacher, contact your teacher, and they can respond, or they can send alerts of things that are due, and you can submit assignments that way. And in middle school, we used similar programs like EdLine and Edmodo, so I think that this was a really positive impact on the kids bringing it back, because it's organized in one place, and you're able to access it very easily, and your entire school account is linked, so all of your documents and everything are accessible from there.
Great, thank you. Got a couple of other things from the superintendent's report. I'm gonna head over to the podium. So, wanted to pass on a couple of words of appreciation to Dr. Holland and our teachers, a couple of whom are in attendance tonight. Just had the curriculum night. It was a great show, without any question. The billing always shows remarkably well, and classroom after classroom after classroom, really appreciated the feedback from teachers, the enthusiasm that they have for their subject area, personality to personality varies. You could really see, you know, the science person is a very different person from the English teacher, and that's part of the fun of the place. But a lot of passion heard from a lot of students and parents as well. Great start. Just about everybody mentioned Schoology. Virtually every single teacher's classroom I was in had something to say about Schoology, and they appreciated that, and you hear from the students tonight that this is having a direct impact on how they navigate through their school day. Also, even heard a few positive comments from staff about the attendance policy, so without any question, hats off to Dr. Holland and the staff for executing that in such short order. I want to make one announcement. The board members have a book at your table called How to Raise an Adult. This is a very important author coming to the district on December 4th at 7 o'clock. Will be the evening presentation. She'll also be in the district for a presentation during the school day to speak with our staff. A timely, very timely author to have come visit us. The title of the book is How to Raise an Adult, and for those of you who may not know about Julia Lithgow-Hame, she was a dean at Stanford for a decade, and one of the things that she noticed in working with students that were coming in there, incoming freshmen, if she asked them what they had accomplished in their life, they could rattle off a list of things that they had done, an amazing list of operating with their bare hands and in the deserts of Africa and other amazing things that they could do. When she asked them, "So, tell me what it is that you believe in, and who are you, and why do you think that's important?" There'd be this really awkward silence with the freshmen. So, part of what our students are living with is growing up in a community or communities where every activity that they have is led by an adult. So, the free play that we associate with childhood is not going on, and also, what comes with that is all the conflict and all the resolution that you have to do with your friends and neighbors, and how to get along with others, how to navigate those things. Kids are more and more missing those kinds of skills. So, a couple of the things from the book that I thought were particularly useful were lists that she provides in there of things that you should expect your two-year-old, five-year-old, 10-year-old, 15-year-old, 22-year-old to be able to do by themselves. She also has two students of her own, neither of which were the kids that she ordered. One is a middle school-aged, lower middle school-aged student now, and another one is a college, kid that's applying to college now, so she's going through the same thing, the same things that many of our parents are, and also experiencing many of the conflicts that our parents are. Very touching and poignant public speaker, compelling also. This is as timely for our staff as it is for our parents, because as parents begin to do more and more for their kids that they didn't do before, staff are frequently the ones that experience that, and so, they can actually reinforce some of these more desirable behaviors of, you know, "Next time, don't have your mom call me. Why don't you send me that email, or why don't you give me that phone call," or whatever it might be. One of the funny things that somebody sent me recently, it's a picture of a kid. Shoe had come untied, and he's standing there, it's an adolescent boy standing there, and his mom looks at his shoe and says, "Can I get that for you, honey?" And that's what, another one of those things we shouldn't be doing for our kids. So, December 4th at 7 o'clock at the Raymond Moore Auditorium. We hope that is a packed house. And then, wanted to finish on a really neat note, a video produced by one of our students called Why We Play.
I love the game of soccer. It's kind of just something I've always wanted to do. You know, I wasn't forced to do it, neither my parents played.
And I started playing field hockey in eighth grade, and I fell in love with it.
I think I always liked the way I felt in the water. It was like, the chance I could get out of my wheelchair and feel like everyone else.
I just loved to play baseball. The second I tried it, it was just the best thing that ever happened to me.
High school's, you know, at first, really intimidating, because you're coming into a place that you don't know what to expect, knowing that you're a part of something. When you first come into the high school, it's truly awesome.
I think I learned a lot about being committed to something, like knowing that you need to be dedicated, and if you want to go far in something, that you need to work hard for it.
You're really responsible to be a student before you are an athlete. You didn't perform well in the classroom, you couldn't perform out here on the field, but also, just kind of taking responsibility of yourself and, you know, making sure that you're healthy and you're fit.
You make decisions off the field, know the impact that that could possibly have on not just you, but your team. Within the code of conduct, it says that you're not supposed to drink or do drugs or alcohol 24/7, 365 days a year.
Achieving my goals academically and in sports was way more important than ever doing drugs and alcohol.
I ultimately didn't want to drink in high school, because I wanted to hold myself to the highest standard, and, you know, drinking is definitely something that wasn't going to help your performance or help you reach those goals.
I had a good social life, and I also made sure I got eight hours of sleep every night. It goes back to time management. I really wasn't wasting any time.
I still had a social life. I still went to those parties. I still had friends.
It does feel like you're competing for something bigger when you're competing for your high school, and that is a great feeling.
It's representing your community. It's representing your parents. It's representing your friends and your teammates.
I don't think there's anywhere else that you can find the love and the desire, but also, the community effort. I mean, it's not just us students who are participating in athletics. It's the teachers. It's the parents.
When you get the chance to play for something that's bigger than yourself, you learn a lot of values.
You walk around the athletic department, you see the Hall of Fame, and you see some of the people who've played here in the past, and it's kind of amazing that you're playing in the same high school as they are, and so, it's truly an honor to play at such a great high school, who really cares about their athletes and puts the time and effort into making sure that we're competing at the best levels we can.
Particularly for freshmen, we just started the year, and the connection to, a meaningful connection to an adult, and a meaningful connection to a team is hugely important. So, some of the stuff that the board funds, it's not just a varsity team, but JV teams, and A teams, and B teams, and as many opportunities for kids as possible, 30 different sports that we offer across the district. And all of those represent, particularly for the freshmen that enter the building, an immediate connection to the place and to others in their school buildings, hugely, hugely important. So, thanks to Steve Douglas for providing that, and a great start to the school year.
Mike, can I ask a question? Am I correct in understanding that that video is now playing in the high school on the monitors throughout the building?
Oh, I don't know. I haven't seen it. Not there?
Yes, it is one of the videos that plays throughout the building, and part of it is, even though it's focused on athletics, that was created to really provide a way to emphasize our values as a school. It's why we play, but it's why we show up, why we work hard in everything that we do. So, it's been, the kids love it, and I think it's great that it centers our students, the entire video.
Well done. Okay. Now, we're on to public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? A few, okay. If you wouldn't mind, I don't know the rules by heart, but please go up to the podium and state your name, and then, just so you know, it's not as if we don't, it's not like we don't want to engage in discussion. I mean, this is our opportunity to hear from you, so you may not hear anything back from us. It doesn't mean we're not listening. It's just our opportunity to hear you. I doubt I'll have to do it, but I'm also required to limit your comments to a reasonable period of time.
Is 20 minutes reasonable? Just kidding. My name is Mary Beth Nabor. I'm a science teacher at the high school, and I wanted to just bring perhaps a new perspective to the discussion about the pond on campus. As a science teacher, we're always looking for new opportunities to get our students to connect to the world around them. That's what science is, is going out there, exploring, and, you know, helping to learn how to explain those things. And our campus is a pretty sterile campus, although we have that beautiful front lawn, and it's great for playing field hockey. It really doesn't lend itself to much scientific investigation, and a few years ago, that pond was put in place, and it's provided us an opportunity to have kids really go out and explore some biodiversity. Our kids go out, and this is, when I say our kids, I'm talking about our biology and our environmental science students, which is really almost every student in the high school at some point in their academic career. We can go out and we can study invertebrates, aquatic invertebrates, the native plants around the pond. If you've been over there, there's asters and sunflowers and cone flowers. We've done insect netting, really all kinds of interesting studies. And we had our kids out there doing a biodiversity study on campus, and kids had to design their own lab. They could pick three different locations on campus to explore biodiversity. One was the front lawn, biodiversity of one species, and they picked a couple of different other places, and many of them picked this area around the pond, because even just walking around, you can recognize that it's something different than the rest of our campus. And while we were out there, a heron came in with its long legs dangling around. The kids were amazed. It landed in the pond, where there already was a family of ducks. I watched them this summer. There were 18 ducks in the pond. And really, their study revealed the only place on campus to study any life is that pond area. So, I would just encourage you, as you make your decisions about maintaining the pond, including the use of chemicals and the depth of the pond, that you consider the curricular benefits that this area has to us. Science really becomes relevant and interesting to kids when they can get out their own experience on their own campus and explore some of the concepts that we talk about in class. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, you have charts.
I have a couple of pictures. It started with a response to Carol White when--
Do you state your name?
I'm sorry, I'll do that. I'm Jill Holden. I'm an obstetrician-gynecologist in the community for the last 25 years, been in the neighborhood for 19 years. I'm a science nerd, and I love biodiversity and everything that science can do, and had my hands in everything, all the way going through. But, we have a neighborhood that we've lived in and been your neighbors and good neighbors for many years, and this has evolved. The last board meeting that I came to was when Mr. Simic was being introduced, and was literally the night before this pond was excavated, and the blue-wrapped fences went up the week before our youngest one graduated from the high school here. And at that meeting, four and a half years ago, there was a lot of discussion. There were a lot of neighbors here. I'm not sure if there's any board members that remain now that were here in 2013. So, I know that board members change, teachers change, students change, staff changes. We bought our houses here. We live here for our lives. We raise our kids. We walk our dogs, and it's changed now. Now, when people are ready to retire and move and have their house next to a swamp that has malodorous content coming up from it into their bedroom windows, it's not very neighborly with that. And we had these conversations on that meeting four and a half years ago, and it was explained to us over and over that a detention pond or a retention pond, and we were trying to get our heads around what that meant, and at that meeting was described that it was never going to hold water long-term, that it would drain out only with the big 100-year storm, but the pond was dug out the next day. And it was described that it would be like the one in Lake Left, which is not next to houses. It's next to a busy street and a parking lot and a school, and has no houses in the lot next door that's looking over it from their bedroom window. The pond that was excavated here has held water since the first day, and it has changed the ecological system in many ways, with mosquitoes, with bullfrogs, day and night, with frogs that are coming up onto-- that are coming up onto, I think, your porch across the street in large amounts. So, very biodiverse, and I get that that's an exciting thing for the students to experience, but it is really hard to live here with something that is malodorous, thick. The keep-out signs went up the day after, we had a conversation with Carol White, and we let her know that, oh, did you know that little kids of the neighboring track team families have been climbing in there during that time? She goes, oh, that's not allowed, and I said, I think that's probably a liability, too. Trees were put in, when they were initially put in, that seemed to help quite a bit. But, they died off right away, and new trees were put in. I don't think anybody has really taken ownership of what it's supposed to be, and the monies that are being put into it with a very poor result at this point. There are ducks there, we've lived watching those ducks, we've watched the, did you guys see the one that got pulled out by the falcon? You know, you have life happening there. We're down to two little ducklings from there, not knowing what will happen. We love the ducks, too, but it's not a very good environment for them to be in, and it's not a very good environment for us. And, you know, the buses had to take their house off the market, it's not selling. The house that's directly across from the parking lot that was trying to sell is now a rental home again. And the Luptons are dropping, and dropping, and dropping their prices, so that they can retire into the condominium that they want to be in. It doesn't seem fair to have this in our neighborhood. And it's in a spot that you don't have to see, but we see it every day. We walk by it every day, we smell it every day, we hear it every day. Just respectfully request some consideration on fixing it, making it right. It doesn't mean it can't be a pond, we know it's a pond already, but it doesn't seem like anybody's taken the ownership on how that's supposed to happen. From what I understand, if you had to, you know, be responsible to the city, they would have structures on, this is how a pond is done, and these are the restrictions, and you don't have that because you're an individual entity. And consequently, nobody's taking ownership of it, and it's a really blight on our neighborhood, and it's affecting housing prices, and just the quality of life, the ecosystem that has changed. I love science. Everything is a science experiment, everything is a point of learning, but I would love that new slate, I would love the beautification on the murals, and the, I can add some murals to the coffee shop, along with the murals that are there. We want to be good neighbors, but we would really love that to be reciprocal, and just kind of putting my plea out there on behalf of the neighbors that pushed me along here.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to? There's a gentleman going up first, I'm sorry, he stood up first, you could go next.
My name is Dan Goon, and I live in the neighborhood, and that was my wife you just heard. And, it's an emotional topic for us. We were told that the pond was necessary as part of the expansion of the tract which we supported, that there needed to be a storm water control program of some sort. The problem is, it's not been managed. The hole was dug, the water collected, everything has been a reaction to a complaint, rather than proactively managed in a proper way. We were told that the pond would be dry like the Lake Bluff Central School retention pond, or detention pond, okay? And that was the thing, we were told it was going to be a detention pond, temporary wet, it's a retention pond since the day it first was dug, and the first rainstorm. When we had that flood, flooded out Lake Forest Hospital, fortuitously, somebody started pumping water out of that pond on the Friday. Because that Monday, Tuesday, when I walked by the pond, the water was four inches from going into the street. If that pumping out hadn't happened that Friday before, there would have been flooding of homes in that area. So it's not been managed. It's been handed off as something for grounds to maintain, but there's nothing to maintain, because there is no plan. Right? There's been a lot of money thrown into it. My first thought was, a great science project, how to maintain a viable pond. If you put a shallow ditch anywhere without aerating it, without continuous flow of fresh water, it'll stagnate. You get this bloom of algae, because it stagnates every time it rains, you get a fresh influx of fresh water, and then the algae take over again. The algae take over, it cuts off oxygen from all the organisms below, and it becomes fetid and squalid, and then attracts mosquitoes. It's a blight, it really is. You know, my degree is in toxicology. I have colleagues that are environmental toxicologists, I've talked to them. It doesn't take a lot to maintain a pond the right way. If nothing else, drop an air hose into it and bubble air through it. It's as simple as that.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Bus, I live across the street from the pond, I've lived there for 23 years, and I just want to say that this is not the first time the neighbors have been before the school board. On many occasion, to be frank, you guys have not been great neighbors. I don't think, I guess my comment is that, I don't know how well you think through some of the projects you do, because this was supposed to be dictated by the state of Illinois, or the local water reclamation. I mean, there's, obviously, it was dictated by some state or local authority, but why is, was this engineered? I guess my, I have more questions. I want to know, was this engineered properly? Did you think this through and find out it was done improperly? I don't know why we were told over, we were lectured that this was never going to hold water, and now all of a sudden, the intake is higher than, why it became a pond in the first place? I just want to know why. When we were all told it was never going to be that. So, how did it become a pond? I don't know why it has to remain a pond. If you guys, with all the input you had at the time, said there would be, it would never be a pond, so why is it a pond now? And what went wrong, I guess is my question. So, thank you very much.
My name is Patrick Lupton, and we've been neighbors to the high school for 34 years, something of that nature, raised a family, educated a family, the whole aspect. But the main thing, I think, is, any educational institution, one of the primary goals is to educate the child. And that education of that area is to teach the child to be a good neighbor to their fellow students, and to their community. And, there's this, there's a problem here. Are we really, is the high school really a good neighbor? Our children are good neighbors to the high school, with all the achievements that they've done, and hard work that we, I know I've seen and talked to. So the main thing is, it's real simple, just, we have to have a different attitude of being a good neighbor. And oftentimes, it will be, for administrators, faculty, and everything, get away from your desk and walk around the high school. And pretend you're showing this to your mother. Let's start that way, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. I wish I could say more than we hear you. We're aware of the situation, and we will address it. Probably not as quickly as you would like, I understand, so. Thank you. Next, on to reports, we're going to have a report on the strategic plan from Mike and Shayla.
Handoff to Dr. Holland, who's got a presentation for us. This is a result of, it's an extension of work that you saw most recently in the June or the July meeting, and this is the logical extension of that work for the coming year. And, it focuses on the four areas that we have talked about as key performance indicators, one of which, we just had a video on, which is that students will be involved in their school, in extracurricular and co-curricular activities. So, with that, Dr. Holland?
Good evening. I feel like I was just here presenting the end-of-the-year report on the strategic plan. So, as Mike mentioned, this, there is a more extensive and detailed report in the board packet. This is just an overview, knowing that there are way more details and percentages and all of those things in the board packet. But, just to start, our strategic plan, as Mike mentioned, is progression over time. And when we think about our district milestones, focused on achievement, instruction, assessment, talent, partnership, and environment, they span everything that we do in the high school. And so, we build every year based on, we build from these milestones, and develop goals, and you'll see our core goals for the year, and then the action steps are connected, as well as metrics. But, every year, we wrestle with this document, because we know that it's progression over time, and it's hard sometimes to represent all the work that led up to this point. And so I'll try to capture some of the work that has gone on ahead of time, or prior to this, so you can see why the goal is named as it is, and what our next steps are. So you'll also notice that we have fine-tuned some of our language along the way. This one, this goal, that all Lake Forest High School students will have access to a guaranteed and viable curriculum, that is the one that has remained the same. Our other goals have remained the same, but we've just fine-tuned some of the language. And so, part of this goal, you'll continue to see our work, our progression of work around curriculum mapping. We've gone from 60% to 75%, to 85%, and in our goal, we have 90% of our course curriculum being mapped by the end of this year. And part of that, every year, we adopt new courses as well, and so, I want to name that we're not at 100% yet, because we have new courses that are getting mapped out right now. And so, we've made a lot of growth in this area. Additionally, connected to our curriculum maps, is just a fine-tuning of our learning targets. And those are what we expect kids to know and be able to do in all of our courses. Really being explicit about that, and making achievement, the pathway to achievement and success transparent for all of our families, our students, and of course, aligned with our course curriculum. We are rolling out, we have rolled out tiered executive function support. I'm sure this board has heard a lot about our work with Rush Neuro-Behavioral Center, but we have, part of our system of support, our tiered supports, we have always had an enriched studies course, for example, and that is a course that students take during the year, takes up one of the periods of their day, where they receive help in navigating school. And for some kids, that's working on organization, communication, prioritizing time. Some of our kids, because we've only had that support as a course, any kid that needs it has to enroll in the course, taking up a period of their day. And a part of our work to build tiered supports is to make sure we have a support in place that doesn't require students to take the course. But some kids just need someone to check in one time a week, some kids, one time a month, some kids, three times a week. And so, one of the things that we're offering this year, and it's rolling out next week officially, is executive functioning support for all of our students before and after school. We already developed a schedule of executive functions tutors, who will be available before school, starting at 7 o'clock, and at the end of the day until 4:30, to help any kid who stops by with executive, with executive functioning needs. And for some kids, that might mean pulling up all of their assignments, mapping them out, and figuring out how they're going to get their work done, emailing teachers with the nudge of an adult, to find out what's missing, or how to make up work, all of those type of things. And so, when we talk about tiered supports, just a reminder that we always want to offer supports to all of our kids, but we recognize that some kids will need more intensive supports, and we're building those tiers, to capture as many students as possible. You'll also see in the report that we've expanded our supports to make sure we're focused on inclusion, thinking about our students with a variety of learning needs, rather than creating separate spaces for them to engage in the curriculum, figuring out ways and making sure that they are part of the classes that we offer, and that we have supports embedded in those classes. And so, we've expanded our co-teaching model, we have something called co-facilitation, and collaborative scheduling, and this is all based on what's written in a student's IEP. Sometimes people wonder, well, why does my class have two adults, either a teacher, or a teacher and a TA? And, one thing I always say, all students benefit from having multiple educators in a room. Even though sometimes there is a perception that my student doesn't belong there, all kids have different learning needs. I always tell our faculty and staff that technically, all of us have an IEP or a 504 plan, because we're all unique, and we all have different learning styles. And part of our responsibility, and one of the areas that the board has been extremely supportive, and is making sure that we're creating a space for all of our kids to get what they need. And so, you'll see that as well in our strategic plan. You heard a lot about schoology, so I won't provide that, won't go into detail, but schoology is actually a significant part of having a guaranteed and viable curriculum, because part of this goal really speaks to access. Making sure our kids are able to communicate with their teachers, they know what's expected of them, and we're creating and putting in place vehicles for that to occur. Our next goal is all Lake Forest High School students will be college and career-ready. We've talked a lot about our partnership with ECR and helping to define readiness, whether that's college readiness, career readiness, and life readiness, which we'll get into in one of the other goals. But, I know Jim's here, but he's done a phenomenal job with helping us move from a pilot summer internship program to a full-blown internship program. And talking with him, he's like, most districts say, if you get six or seven kids in the first year, that's great. He managed to get 15-plus students, and connect them with key internship opportunities this summer. So one of our goals is to continue to build on that. We will offer our first career fair as well this year during the school day, and we're really excited about that, getting kids exposed to different career options. And one of the things that's been amazing, is that Jim's been able to really work through our course offerings, and connect them to career clusters, so kids know when they sign up for classes, what career interests those classes are connected to. And we're looking forward to expanding our partnership with community organizations, as well as other organizations, to really have a robust fair this spring. So we'll be offering that. Last year, you heard a lot about our placement process, and just making sure, over emphasizing the importance of making sure that when our kids choose classes, that we're really thinking about their next level of challenge. Not settling for complacency, not being complacent in that process, but really creating a more robust picture around what it means to step into your next level of challenge, but also be supported in doing so. And so, we're going to continue that work. One of the areas that constantly comes up, and some of you know this, because we had a lot of conversations last year about math, we're actually going to take a hard look at our entire math trajectory at the high school, and that will require us to partner with District 65 and District 67, to really think about the progression that kids move through when they take math courses. And, part of this is to see what's happening, to identify anything that might be getting in the way of student growth, and also ways to accelerate student growth where necessary. And so, we're going to take a comprehensive look at our math program, and really start to look at math readiness and student growth in that area. Overall, we're looking at, I mentioned, our work in developing our personalized learning plan, pushes us to define what it means to graduate from Lake Forest High School. We're going to continue to look at growth and readiness of all of our students. Connected with that is showing up to school, and, which is why attendance also falls under this. As I mentioned, our attendance procedure changes have been pretty positively received. One of the things that we plan on doing, because we changed a lot of our attendance per One of the things that we plan on doing, because we changed a lot of our attendance procedures, and really I always talk to people that attendance is a cultural shift. It requires you to think differently about what's happening. And one of the things we've tried to do with changing our procedures is just to get people to think about, do I really need to pull my student out of school today? And if anything, if that's a decision, because parents, of course, can use their own discernment and discretion around that, what's the impact? How does the school calculate attendance? We've gone over the top with trying to be transparent. So everyone knows how their decisions impact the school overall. And we believe that showing up is a part of being ready. And we're, we've built that into being college and career ready. Our next goal is all Lake Forest High School students will participate in extracurricular activities, clubs, or sports. You'll notice this last part is slightly different, equal to or greater than the number of years enrolled at Lake Forest High School. One of the things that we definitely captured in all of our reporting last year is that the majority of our students are connected and doing something. What we definitely pointed out at the end of the year is that we had 200, a little over 200 students who are returning this year from last year, who were not connected to anything in the building. And our work this year is to learn more from those students. Take the first part of the year, or a little, a segment of the first part of the year, to speak with them, to find out why they weren't connected, and to build programming around their needs. One of the things, we know we have a lot of elite athletes. We have students who are connected to different youth groups and different things outside of the building. And we totally encourage that. But one thing we always say, it's not okay for us not to know what's happening. And we want to know how we can be better for all of our kids. We also identified in the data that we have, some of our students who aren't participating receive special education services. So we're, we want to make sure that when we roll out different opportunities to connect for our kids, that we're making sure that we're really engaging all of our kids. So that might mean looking at Special Olympics program, expanding our applied sports program and things like that, our allied sports program. And so we're digging deeper. We also noticed last year that some of the kids who weren't participating found themselves in the dean's office quite often. And so that speaks to our work around social emotional growth and finding out what's happening there. And I can speak to it, and I'm sure many other people can speak to it, who were very active in high school. Being connected means something. Having a relationship with peers outside of your classroom can expand your perspective on the world as well as building positive relationships with multiple adults during the day has a huge impact on kids. And so we're going to continue to, to dig deeper there with our students who did not participate and who are choosing not to participate. Another part of this goal is really being proactive in our growth of our coaches and sponsors. We have evaluation models. We revised our evaluation model for coaches to make sure that we are talking with them and making sure that their work is connected to our values, beliefs around growth, communication with parents, students, supporting their development. We also have a speaker series lined up for our coaches as well. And we, for the first time, implemented an evaluation model for the sponsors of our clubs and activities. And so part of this is not to play big brother, but is to make sure that across the board, we're giving our students the best experience possible, not just in the classroom, but outside of the classroom. Our last goal for the year is all Lake Forest High School students will actively engage in learning, developing, and applying social, emotional learning standards and skills. Last year, this probably was the longest goal with a lot of language around executive functions, habits of mind, 21st century learning skills, all of which are found in the SEL standards. Similar to District 65 and 67, who also utilize those standards, we wanted to align the language that we're using and also our, our work with students. So I mentioned our executive functioning supports, which crosses over into this area as well. But we have the expansion, we're expanding our peer mentoring program, which is an opportunity for students to talk to students about their experience and to provide feedback. A lot of training has gone into this, and we partner with Croya around this work. And they've been phenomenal in pushing in and training our students and supporting them throughout the day. Students hear from adults all the time, but we quickly learn that the biggest impact on students, sometimes changing their behaviors or thinking differently, is knowing that, number one, they're not alone. But they can also hear from, but when they also hear from another student who might be experiencing some of the same things or maybe have some advice to give on how to get through that. So we're expanding our peer mentoring program. We're infusing SEL standards across our entire wellness, wellness department to ensure that we are explicitly teaching the standards in all of our grade level wellness classes. Additionally, and Mike has spoken a lot about this, we are partnering with Gallup to implement a social emotional learning assessment this year. I know last year, at the end of the year, I mentioned Rush Neuro Behavioral Center's interest in partnering with us around creating a high school assessment. That is underway, and that will take a few years to get off the ground. We're going to be think partners, critical friends in developing that. In the meantime, we have kids that show up every day, and we need to know what's happening with them. And so we're excited to partner with Gallup to start that work. And amazingly, but not surprisingly in some ways, a lot of the language that Gallup uses is the same language that Rush uses. So we're less worried about a conflict when we do roll that out. There's going to be more of an alignment there. So this is our, our, these are our four core areas for the year. As I mentioned, metrics and specific information about the data we'll collect is in the report that's posted. But does anyone have any questions? So over half of our teachers have engaged in professional development with Rush.
Yeah.
And so it's our faculty members and a few support staff members, but mostly faculty members who have began, who engaged in the workshops and PD with them and already started to infuse that work in their classrooms.
So I try really hard not to talk about my kid because it's unfair. But I will tell you that the phrase executive functioning has worked its way into conversation at my house, which kind of blows my mind. So from an N of one, as we say, that's pretty impressive to me that, you know, he can say those words.
Thank you, Shayla. I know it seems like you're always up here talking about this, but it's really important for you all to keep these milestones front and center with us, just so we're reminded of the important work that you all do every day. So we don't get so bogged down in contracts and policies and budgets and levies and things, which are also important. So thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we're on to committee reports, Education Committee. I know, at least, the Education Committee is meeting in a week or so, so.
Next week, yeah. Our first, our first meeting is the 19th at 7:30 a.m. at East Campus. So I don't have any report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Finance and Operations, Dave?
Yeah, thanks, that's right. Thanks, Reese. We did meet, we had our meeting on August 25th. A well-attended meeting, a well, a well-run meeting. I appreciated Jennifer preparing for the meeting. And I also appreciated the presentation she gave today and covered in the tentative budget, which was the majority of what we discussed in the meeting. But it was not all that we discussed in the meeting. We aligned on future dates that we're, that we will adhere to. We committed and aligned on getting out packets and information ahead of time so that we can have a chance to analyze that and understand the contents as far ahead as possible. I think that Jen put together a very good presentation that was an orientation for some of the new Finance and Ops Committee members so that we can be as highly optimized in our meetings as possible. I thought that was real good. And we also talked about some other things like the transition program here in this building that reaches out to a lot of members of the community that we don't always talk about, which I thought was really nice. And there was some conversation about the solar project, too. So any rate, it was a productive meeting. We do have another meeting scheduled in November with a lot of work to be done by Jen and her staff prior to that meeting and by all the committee members. So I'm glad we got one out.
Policy, Ted?
Policy committee, Matt?
We have not met since our last board meeting.
So liaison reports. I know Sally has a fairly comprehensive and extensive EdRed report on our new evidence-based school funding.
I feel like I want to wait till everybody comes back, and I'm sure they don't want to miss this.
I don't think they're coming back.
I don't know. I also, as happy as I am that Dr. Nemecus is here, I am so sad that John Powers is not here for the fruition of me talking about EdRed for this long. Friends, the Illinois State Legislature acted and Governor Rana signed a bill. This is pretty exciting. We will provide a longer, if you can imagine it, description of the, the parts of it that are relevant to the District 115. But I want to give the community and my colleagues some of the highlights. So after two years-ish without a budget, on August 31st, Governor Rana signed something called the Evidence-Based Funding for Student Success Act. This has been called historic as a change in the way that Illinois school funding is handled. There are two reasons why. The first is that the state has now finally adopted, after decades of discussion, something called an evidence-based adequacy model, which you've heard me say over and over again, uses 20-some factors to determine a unique student funding model by school district, and in some cases even lower than that, rather than a one-size-fits-all for what it costs to provide minimum, minimum adequate funding for public education. The second is that this model pairs with a method to disperse new state GSA dollars, new dollars. So understand that we spend about $5-plus billion a year on public education in Illinois. So when we talk about new dollars, we're only talking about $350 million, which is not a lot of money comparatively. But the key here is really that it is beginning a new chapter in the way that the state assesses who gets money and how they line up priority-wise for who gets it. There are a few key provisions. Let me start by saying that the bill is 550 pages long. It is 122,000 words, and it has 999 sections to it. It's, I did. I skimmed. There are many provisions which are not directly relevant to District 115. There was a little something for everyone in that bill. There was a lot that went on, for instance, for the Chicago Public Schools. It could have some, some indirect effect on us. But I want to focus you on three things that are relevant. The first is you're going to start to hear a lot about the phrase adequacy target. And that is a number that will be assigned to us by the Illinois State Board of Education. In effect, again, it's that unique set of 27 factors which are available now on the ISBE website that will tell you in a priority way how we'll receive general state aid for the new dollars again. There has not been a determination by school. If you go, you can plug in factors. There are some examples on the state website. Do not get distracted by that. We have not had our number assigned to us, nor has anybody else. It will be critical, and our administration knows this, to monitor when we get our first adequacy target because there will be assumptions that go into that that we want to be very careful of because it, again, ranks us in terms of priority with the state of Illinois. That's something that we'll watch very carefully. An adequacy target is not the same thing as, number one, a district budget. And it is not the same thing as what you want to give your students for them to succeed. It's not the state's entire district budget because it does not include certain necessary components such as certain kinds of special ed expenditures. It does not include transportation, capital maintenance, new construction, and servicing existing bonds. Remember, all it really is supposed to do is put you in line for when you get GSA money. In addition, if you are funding at an adequacy level, you are not going to be taking into account the kinds of performance programs and initiatives that a high-performing district like 115 wants to deliver in order to improve student performance and enhance career readiness. According to EdRed, some of the things that are not included in that adequacy model would include ensuring class sizes of less than 25 pupils, one-to-one instructional technology such as laptops. It assumes a two-to-one ratio, so you can sort of do the math on that. Extended and gifted education programs. Vocational education, particularly extensive career-oriented programs, which as we've heard from Dr. Holland and Mr. Sullivan, is one of the things that's very important to us going forward. Dual credit course offerings, a robust co-curricular and student activities roster. And again, that's something directly related to what Dr. Holland was just talking about, as well as additional student support services for at-risk students. And as you know, servicing all of our students is one of the milestones. So when we talk about adequacy target, we will be talking about those things and we will be reminding you about those things. The second thing that you have probably read about in the paper is that the, the act itself does provide a mechanism for a voter referendum to put on the ballot, a referendum to lower states, I'm sorry, a school district's property tax rate. So let me just give you the basics of that, and then we can discuss it in much more detail. It first comes online with consolidated elections in April of 2019. And thereafter, it can only go on the ballot every two years in those consolidated elections. In order to put a mandate on the ballot, voters in a district have to be in a district where it, the district itself is already above 110% of its GSA adequacy target, whatever that is. And they can decrease, they can petition to decrease the property tax by a rate of up to 10%, provided that the resulting reduction would not cause that district to fall below the 110%. In other words, GSA doesn't want to have to pick up the tab because you have reduced your tax rate such that they now have to pay it out of the GSA. In order for them to put it on the ballot, the petition has to be signed by 10% of the district's registered voters, and it has to be submitted six to 10 months before the election. So it's got a long, a long lead time. In addition, regardless of the outcome of such a referendum, another referendum under that provision can't be placed on the ballot for the next two consecutive consolidated education cycles, which means that a total of six years has to elapse between mandates appearing in the, in the election. Just a side note, the voter referendum provision was a very late amendment to the pending legislation. It really sort of came up out of nowhere about 72 hours before it was signed, before it was enacted. It's described as a more targeted alternative instead of a statewide property tax freeze on the education portion of taxes. It is more likely to be, it's intended for, and more likely to be pursued by districts that have very high tax rates and low property value because in effect, you're saying we will live with that minimum adequacy amount in order to, to lower the tax rate. The last piece, and I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this, is that there is a tax credit for scholarship donations. And this is a five-year pilot program that is offering in Illinois, not a federal, state tax credit of every 75, of 75% of every dollar spent if you donate it to private school scholarships. And there's a maximum of $75 million in tax credits that are available to be awarded annually. This gives money via scholarship to eligible Illinois students to go to private schools outside of the public system. And that's sort of the big watershed piece of it, is that it's for the first time putting that into the general public education bill. Eligibility requirements basically require that the student be in a home where the income is less than 300% of the federal poverty level. And there's priority given to students who are in what are deemed academically failing districts. The reason that it's important, other than the fact that this is a really first time that the concept of funding private education in this manner is occurring in the state of Illinois, is that there are many, many pieces of this legislation that are going to require a great deal of interpretation. But one of the possibilities is that the $75 million that will be provided in tax benefits will be deducted from that very paltry $350 million in new dollars, effectively limiting, dropping it almost immediately to $275 million. And then there are other things. to $275 million. And then there are other things that are going to start to decrease that number as well. Again, I mentioned to you that the only new funding that's really being discussed here is the $350 million against a spend of more than $5 billion a year right now. If the state were to fully fund at the adequacy target all of the public schools in Illinois, they would need another $7 billion. So, when we're talking about $350 million and the gap that already exists to take another 75 from that is a possibility is worrisome. There are, the last two provisions that may come up, and we may be asked questions about, is that the bill provides mandate relief for some of the programs that are relevant to District 115. There is mention of a reduction in the amount of required physical education instructional time, and there is mention of allowing districts to offer drivers' education through third-party vendors rather than faculty. There is not enough specificity in the act for us to even determine whether or how an eligible district could be able to implement those changes. And until the rules are actually drafted by the State Board of Education, it's not possible for us to consider whether or not District 115 can take advantage of those mandates, or the mandate relief. We will obviously continue to watch not only the rulemaking, but the amendments that will come, and to the extent that other pieces of it that I haven't even gotten into are relevant to District 115, we will, of course, continue to be proactive with our communication with both the board and with the community. I wanted to talk about this last piece first because it's significant, and that is what happens next. I usually wouldn't do that. I wouldn't talk about that first, but it's such a quagmire of what's going to happen from a process standpoint that now that I've told you all the things that are in the bill, let's talk about what that really means. ISBE, the Board of Education, has to draft rules now to implement the bill. We know that this will require participation from the Department of Revenue, who has to figure out the taxing pieces of it, the county clerks, who may be dealing with petitions to put mandates on the ballot, and then there are other officials, obviously, who are affected by the act's administration. There are a number of unanswered questions about what the bill intended, what the language actually means. After those rules are drafted, they have to be published for review, and then they go to the Illinois Joint Committee on Administrative Rules, which is a bipartisan group of 12 legislators who have to actually approve them. Two more complexities to add into it. The bill has a very unusual, not completely unheard-of inseverability provision, which means that if any portion of the 550-page bill is deemed unlawful and unenforceable, the whole thing fails. So, if anybody sues successfully on any provision, the whole thing becomes defunct. And I would assume that that is mutually assured destruction, right? There's a little bit of something in the bill for everybody, and so the idea is, everybody's got to hold hands and take the good with the bad, and nobody blinks, right? But if anybody blinks, and my, off the record, not that there is such a thing, guess, is that the biggest risk is from the Chicago Teachers Union in relation to their pensions, the whole thing comes unraveled, potentially. The last thing is that the legislators who had to move heaven and earth to make sausage and get this bill passed have already started talking about the amendments that they're planning to introduce in their next general session, which is at the end of October, just to clean up some of the mess that they recognize that's in here. So, if you think about the rulemaking process, and the amendments, and the potential lawsuits, we can't tell you when and if this will all go online. That's, we will, again, we will provide this for you in writing. I should have provided it in PowerPoint. The other opportunity that you will have to get more information about it is something I think probably that Reese, you'll mention, that is, on October 3rd, the city of Lake Forest and districts, I believe, 67 and 115, are hosting a community public forum on how recent state and federal government fiscal decisions will impact Lake Foresters. It's called "A Fiscal Stress Test: How the State's Decisions Impact the City and Schools of Lake Forest." It will be held at the John and Nancy Hughes Theater at Gordon Community Center on Tuesday, October 3rd, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., and we will have more information on the website as we learn it. Thank you. Now, there will be a test. Who wants to start?
I just wanted to say thank you. You saved me a lot of reading.
Oh, I have it in Word. I'll send it to you.
So, what happens this year, Sally? If it still has to go through this rulemaking and amendment, how do they distribute?
I don't know. Jen, Mike, you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, the way the thing is written is, these things take effect when the governor signs the bill.
Right. It's effective immediately.
So, for example, with the PE requirements, and the driver's ed, when that is signed, it goes into effect. Now, as Sally mentioned, it has to go to J-CAR, so any number of different things can happen. There are some decisions that districts can make right now for the current school year relative to PE requirements, for example. Districts are going to begin doing that on other things, like with the driver's ed. Wait, because the devil will be in the details.
And with respect to that, keep in mind, again, that the vast majority of the money is already embedded in what's available to us. Really, the only question is what they're going to do with the $350 million. Do you agree with that, Jen?
Yes and no. So, they have rolled in some additional things. Each district, when we received our first general state aid payments last week, received about $15,000 more, and we received that twice a month. So, $30,000 more for the entire month. Now, the question is, we don't really have a breakdown of what yet is all included in that. So, some of it is our normal general state aid that we would typically expect, and then some of it is they're rolling in those categorical payments into it. But which ones to what amount, we don't yet have the details. But we're happy to take their money and deposit it, and we'll move forward and wait for, I think, some of the reporting to follow. Correct.
And maybe they shouldn't spend it all.
NSSCD, Ted, is there anything to report?
Nothing to report at this time. We're not meeting in September, so the next meeting will be October 4th, although there is a visioning session on September 14th. Everyone is invited to attend that. I'll be there. Mike's going in. I'll have more to report after that.
We now move on to the action item part of the meeting. So, first item on the agenda is the adoption of the 2017-2018 budget that we just heard about. So, may I have a motion to adopt the 2017-2018 budget?
So, move, oh.
You'll have to read it.
Move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, adopt the 2017-18 budget.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next few items relate to some information that was provided in our board packet. First item is the approval of the superintendent 2017-2018 compensation, which has a 2% increase over prior year. May I have a motion to approve the superintendent 2017-18 compensation?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the superintendent 2017-2018 compensation.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of our chief operating officer, Jen Hermes', multi-year enabling agreement. We share the services of our chief operating officer with District 67. They hold the contract. We are approving, or before us is the approval of the enabling agreement. So, may I have a motion to approve the chief operating officer multi-year enabling agreement?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the chief operating officer multi-year enabling agreement.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of the 2017-2018 10-month staff. These are our staff that work 10 months out of the year. They're 10-month staff compensation. We reviewed this detail at a prior meeting. This is the approval of that compensation. So, may I have a motion to approve the 2017-18 10-month staff compensation?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the 2017-2018 10-month staff compensation.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? None? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of all of our administr, excuse me, administrator and teacher salary and benefits report. A detailed report was provided in your packet. We've approved these, or they're contractual. We've seen them before, so may I have a motion to approve the administrator/teacher salary and benefits report?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the administrator/teacher salary and benefits report.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have on-staff athletic trainers for all of our student sporting events. The state requires a certain number of certified athletic trainers be at every sporting event, so we contract with outside athletic training facilities to provide peak athletic training services. So, next is the approval of the Athletico Athletic Training Services Agreement. May I have a motion to approve the Athletico Athletic Training Services Agreement? Thanks.
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the Athletico Athletic Training Services Agreement in substantially the form presented to the board.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of a 2017-2018 intergovernmental agreement for library services in the amount of $1,000. There are some students in Knollwood that do not have access to a library, so the district contracts with the Lake Bluff Library to provide library cards to Knollwood students that request one. Is this the correct amount, Mike?
The back and forth with the library over the course of the last 48 hours has been that they would like to reduce that amount to $500. So, the motion should be the amount of $500 for that service.
So, may I have approval of a 2017 intergovernmental agreement for library services in the amount of $500?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the 2017-2018 intergovernmental agreement for library services in the amount of $500.
Second.
Any comments, thoughts, questions?
Do we have any follow-up on, I know, we know how many people get the cards. Do we know how many people with cards check out books, and the frequency they check out books, or is it just giving them the privilege of being in the library, which is a wonderful thing, and gathering, and tutoring, and...
I know there was some circulation data, but that might have been for Lake Bluff elementary districts. Do we have any data on our kids?
Good evening. Great to be here. Eric Bailey, Library Director for the Lake Bluff Public Library. The cards were actually pretty well-used. The kids that got them, was 370 items checked out, which for the, for the kids, which is a total of 23 of the eligible youth that picked them up, that was, that was pretty good.
Thank you.
Good data.
So, we had a motion. Do we have a second? We had a second? Yeah, there was comments. So, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Markison?
I'm sorry, before we get into that, I know it might sound middle-aged, but I'm personally against this for multiple reasons. When this came up last year, I voted for it, and it was interim, while a better way of doing this could be worked out. Apparently, we didn't, nothing was worked out. I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, especially Lake Bluff taxpayers, who, in effect, have to pay again. They, the average Lake Bluffer pays, I believe it's $230 annually in property taxes to support the library. And I really think, and this program was not that well, sure, the people that did get cards, sounds like they used it, but that was less than 25% of those eligible. So, the majority didn't partake of the program at all. And I just think it's, you know, to put this on the back of taxpayers who've already paid to support, you know, in Lake Forest, we support the Lake Forest Public Library, and in Lake Bluff, you know, they do the same. But then to ask them to come back and pay for individuals that don't want to do it, and I think between the 424 people, it wouldn't be much to ask them to pay $15 each to get a card. That's all I have on it.
I don't think it affects Lake Forest at all, but I understand your point. But I think Eric did do an incremental cost analysis, like how much it really costs to service these 23 kids. And I think you're saying that it's not really costing you any more, but yet you're going to get 500 bucks from, from Lake Forest School District. So, anyway.
I completely honor and understand the concerns, and this is certainly something that we've monitored very carefully in a number of ways. First off, to see if there was a better way to do this, to offer this service that became available. Unfortunately, not as yet. The state of Illinois has had some bigger fish to fry than working out some of the conundrums and mishaps of the way that the library districts and systems are set up and handled right now in the state of Illinois. Though fortunately, there's been some progress on the budgetary front, so who knows where the future may go. As far as the burden on taxpayers, we have very carefully monitored our revenue and expenses so that we aren't looking, to make certain that we aren't looking at massive decreases in revenue or anything of that nature. We haven't seen anything like that. We've been very much steady. So, we are not losing funds by any means. And the goal here is really, in the agreements with District 115, but also with District 65 twofold, there's the desire to offer the library service as an educational supplement to families and students who may not, students whose families may not be able to afford that, certainly. But there's also a desire to remove an obstacle to closer collaboration between the Lake Bluff Library and the other educational institutions in the community. In the past, whenever we've found ourselves in a situation where we wanted to reach out to the schools, to work on an initiative, whatever that was, this has been an obstacle that we would encounter, that the teachers could not be certain that all of the students in their classes would necessarily have access to that because the access to the cards was dependent on the willingness or ability of their families to go in and pay this tax-equivalent fee. And this has, removes that obstacle to more effective collaboration between the library and the other educational institutions in the area.
I can't speak any more eloquently than you already have, but I can tell you that as a resident of Lake Bluff and as a parent of a child who saw that program come into being when our kids were still in the elementary school, I'm very aware that this is a continuation of the program that was begun in the Lake Bluff, in District 65. And we saw those And we saw those kids do a number of projects in the library, and I can tell you, even in our later lives, in involvement with Boy Scouts, for instance, that we will still have merit badge meetings with the Lake Bluff kids. As much as those communities merge, once they get to the high school, the reality is that that's those, particularly the kids in Knollwood, that's their home library. And, and we continue to see a continuation of not only the academic, but also the extracurricular that I think is an important part of the community. And I, I can't, as a, a school board member, I can't, I can't deny any portion of our population that, that access, particularly since they had it in, in District 65.
I guess one further question. This 500, was it $1,000, now it's 500? Actually, I thought it was 400, now it's 500 again. Do you have to add staff, or is this, is there a cost to Lake Bluff Library to issue these 23 cards?
There, there is, and some of the numbers that go into that are, are fairly fixed. It's 52 cents a piece for each library card. We do draft one of those for all of the kids that are eligible for the program, whether they pick it up or not. That way, it's ready for them. They've got a packet ready to go. Cost of printing, some of the, the paper, and the cost of staff time. So the, the staff time's a little bit more variable, depending on who's going to be doing some of the work. Some of that's not quite as easy to always predict. Is there, there anything in, in particular as far as some of the numbers that...
We're not adding staff.
Oh, we're not adding staff? No, no. If that's the question, no, no.
I mean, you're really prepared. You have down that the card is 52 cents. That's impressive. So, so, and I'm really cheap, by the way, so I, I love this. The extra usage of the library is really good, right? So I see it as kind of an investment back in the Lake Bluff community, because I often think about how these things evolve and how libraries are going to take shape. And I know that I use that library, I know my kids use that library, we have the Boy Scout troop stuff going there. And to me, anything that increases the usage of the library is an investment in the community of Lake Bluff, so, which ultimately makes a stronger high school for all of us, too. So you've got my support.
So roll call, we could go to a roll call vote?
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Nay.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Lots of detail on this month's Human Resources Report. Started school, lots of new teachers, lots of new staff, or at least more than normal monthly reports. So may I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Lots of stuff on there. Guy, scales, nothing? Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The, next is the Consent Agenda. Any item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of any board member. So may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items, including the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for June and July 2017, acknowledgment of a classic Toyota donation of a car for security use? Thank you. It's, it, Classic Toyota is the name of the dealership, though, right? It's not a classic Toyota. Minutes of a regular meeting and workshop, July 10th, 2017. Minutes of an executive session, July 10th, 2017. Disposal of audio recordings from August 29th, 2017. I need a motion. May I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Consent Agenda items as presented.
Second?
Second.
Two seconds. Any comments, questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we had several FOIA requests this past month.